Mr. McGary. Mr. Wolkey?
Here.
Mrs. Mahin?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mrs. Sne. Mayor Beemish? We do have a forum.
Okay, we have our minutes from our June 27 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve. Is there support for the motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? I'd better call her on.
Mr. Wolkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yeah.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Next matter on the agenda is the application to have the downtown riverfront overlay district, DRO, applied to 180 East Race Street. The staff have a report.
Yes, sir, we do. The applicant's partners in hope incorporated with the executive director, Jessica Echols, who was here today, and will be one to answer any questions if needed. Requesting the planning commission to review proposal for the new commercial office building at 180 East Race Street using the downtown riverfront overlay district. The applicant is proposing the construction of a new two-story commercial building. The property is currently zoned as B2 general business district. It's a .21 acre vacant gravel lot located at the southwest corner of East Race Street and South Mulberry Street. Building is going to be their primary office location for Partners in Hope. The exterior elevations, landscape design, parking, and all design elements are in your packet. After site plan review by staff, it's been determined the project does meet several of the conventional zoning requirements of the underlying zoning district. All other aspects of the project do meet the requirements of the zoning code. Has been reviewed by development, engineering, fire, and utility departments. Based on the DRO process outlined in the zoning code, the following list are the items that do not meet the standard zoning requirements. One is the building setbacks along South Mulberry Street of 25 feet. Advocants asking for a reduction of 10 feet. The required buffer yard. Proposed building will not meet the required 25-foot buffer yard for separation between B2 and the R7 family zoning next door to this property. Advocants asking for a reduction of 10 feet. They also plan to install a 10-foot, I'm sorry, 6-foot private fence along that south property line. The required off-street parking, based on the square footage calculations from the zoning code, the building is required to provide nine regular spaces and one handicap space. They're asking for a reduction of three spaces, which would provide the six spaces and one handicap space as well. Off-street parking location proposed site has three of the required spaces encroaching in the front yard setbacks along the East Race Street frontage. Due to the lot size, the applicant is requesting that that proposed parking be allowed in that setback to be able to use and utilize this site more effectively. The off-street design standards portion does not have enough separation from the right-of-way along the East Race Street, which would be the required 10 feet. They are asking for a reduction by seven feet to allow the parking to be added into that area. All other additional review items concerning the utility and engineering items for this site have been revised and approved, and the plans have been corrected to reflect those changes. The property at 180 East Race Street has, does not meet the B2 business required minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Property is 112 feet by 82 feet for a total of 9,200 square feet. It's a .21 acre lot having a 77% reduction in area from the required minimum lot size, making this a legal but nonconforming lot. Proposed use does require some reductions of the B2 zoning district requirements. Utilizing the criteria intended to justify the DRO application, the proposed project will have a minimal effect on the environment and neighborhood as most of the standards only requirements have been met by the proposed development. Development has taken into account the existing commercial uses in the surrounding residential neighborhood into the design, and the property's small lot size does limit its reuse, keeping it as a vacant gravel lot or potentially a small residential property. Based upon the criteria in Section 1143.25 of the zoning code, it is requested that planning commission provide a positive recommendation to the city council for proposed DRO application.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Have there been any comments from neighbors?
I have not received any comments directly, Mr. Sir.
Am I correct that on-street parking is not an issue in that area?
There are on-street parking spaces available along Race and Mulberry. In my time out in the field, I haven't seen any spaces not available on-street.
Could you ask a mechanical question here? The, there are certain things that there are made representations of today. For instance, between this lot and the R7 zoning to the south, there's a 6-foot privacy fence.
Yes, sir.
What assurances do we have or what assurances are made that that fence will be erected and maintained?
Well, if it's a part of the required site plan, we would ensure that that is installed according to the plan. Further down the road, if it's removed, we would have to reference this case as same as required landscaping on a general site. Can't remove it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, this list of nonconformance got pretty long once the official was submitted. I understand the front yard setback, number one. Number two, though, the 25-foot side buffer, there's a residential zone property next to it. Is that a vacant lot or is that a property? I mean, is there a building there? And is the property owner of that property okay with the reduced buffering?
To my knowledge, it is a rental unit. I haven't heard any comments from that property owner. I know notifications were sent out. The property is being maintained. There is a structure there.
So, maybe that'll come out in the public hearing portion. The parking spaces, I don't see any kind of recommendation or analysis by the staff on some of these items that may or may not be a concern. I get that the staff is requesting that the planning commission make a positive recommendation to the council, which I guess is as close to an affirmation of the application and a recommendation that went forward. But in terms of the parking spaces, you know, parking is kind of a premium. It's a sensitive subject. I understand there's on-street parking. There's, to my knowledge, there's no plan to eliminate that on-street parking, so it could supplement. Are we at all concerned that, you know, right now with the clientele and the staffing, they feel there's only a need for six spaces? But if our code normally requires nine, are we okay with that? I mean, that's a, basically a 33% reduction, 50%? I don't know how the math works there, but...
Yes, sir.
It's a significant reduction over what is typically required. So, what was the staff discussion about that?
Well, between talking with Ms. Echols, as I have in the report, they only have four full-time employees and two volunteers. A lot of their traffic for need for their clients is going to be foot traffic. They don't have vehicles or they have to have a ride, given their economic or personal situations. So, based on employee size, they're going to have the needed space for off-street parking on that site. The other part of that is because it is a smaller lot, it can't afford the space to add that extra additional parking without further reductions in the zoning code.
Okay. The next one is the front setback. So, if they're parking in the front setback, are they taking up the whole front? Is that the, is that the variance they're looking for?
Essentially, the way the site's designed, the parking lot is on the south or the west side.
Right.
And three of the spaces encroach upon that front yard setback, so they will extend in front of that front plane or the wall. That's what that is for. The building itself more than meets the building setback for the Race Street side. It's more or less those spaces going to encroach that front yard setback, again, due to trying to get the maximum amount of spaces on the lot for off-street parking.
Has engineering looked at these? I guess number six is one between engineering and police. They're going to be backing up into the, into Race Street when they're coming out of the parking space? Is that what it's saying?
We actually had choice one, and Ms. Echols revised the site plan. The curb will actually extend, and it's actually going to create a better curb entrance, an apron into the alley. So, that was actually...
So, we think that'll be safe, then?
Yes, sir. It should keep those first few spaces from actually backing into the street, and that was the reason why we brought that up.
Okay, and so then number seven, they want three feet of parking separation from the right-of-way, not the 10.
Correct.
And we're okay with that?
Yes, sir. The post office side next, right behind it, it will actually mirror that same style of parking that's currently on that site.
What is the, number nine, what is the typical, what is the minimum required privacy fence that we want? Is it six feet or is it eight feet? Or is there no standard?
Six feet is the highest allowed in commercial.
Okay. And has engineering been consulted on the sewer concerns in number 10 and 11? Are they okay with...
Yes, those plans, the plans were revised to reflect that as well. They corrected that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions of staff?
Well, I have a procedural question. Are we voting to approve or recommend?
Recommend.
We always recommend.
Yeah, what we're doing today is having a public hearing. We'll take, go into that portion of it in just a few minutes. After the public hearing terminates, we'll be requesting action to be taken on whether we want to recommend this to city council.
No, you're actually making a recommendation to approve this. The city council would have the option within five days. Yeah.
Got you.
So, if council, if we recommend approval and council does nothing, we have made the final decision?
Yes, correct. That is correct.
And I guess everybody is aware that the lack of a unanimous vote is a no-look.
That's also correct, yes. That's a long table. Any other questions of staff? Okay, this matter has now been addressed by staff. Questions were made by commission. This is a public hearing on the purpose of letting us hear the public's concerns concerning this application. If you have any comments at all concerning this application, please come forward to the lectern, give us your name and address, and give us your comments. First of all, those in favor of the application can come forward. Anybody in favor of the application that wants to speak?
Hi, Jessica Echols. I'm, I am representing Partners in Hope as the owners of the property. In favor, I wanted to clarify earlier, we had heard about the property owner to the south, whether or not they were comfortable with that side setback. I have spoken with Mr. Jimmy Urtrecht on several occasions about this. He's aware of the plans. He's seen them, and he is okay with the setbacks on the Mulberry side, as well as the privacy fence being adequate between our property and the property owned by himself that he uses as a rental property. So, thank you very much.
Any other comments in favor of the application? Any comments against the application? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Robert Cole. I own 251 South Mulberry Street across the street. I own 305 and 307 South Mulberry across the street. I have mixed emotions about coming here today because I am so happy that the city is changing the zoning so they can do some things in the city. I think it's long overdue. Originally, I owned that lot and applied to the city to see if I could put parking in there. By the time you did all the setbacks, it was not possible to pave it. That's why it remained a gravel lot, okay? There is a parking problem down in that area. If you check your police reports, you'll find out over the last couple of months that the police departments have called, been called repeatedly to 305 South Mulberry Street because we can't keep people out of our parking area. They're coming from as far as two blocks away and parking their cars there. So, the city has come and ticketed them to get rid of it, okay? Number two, you took out the stoplight. So, when you took out the stoplight, you put yellow stripes down all the intersections in all directions and removed about six parking spaces that were available to park on the street prior to this. And that was just done this last year. So, when you go to Habitat, which is across the street there, they don't have enough parking for their employees, and their employees are having trouble parking in that area, okay? Last but not least, when I had this property and I owned it and owned where Partners in Hope is, I bought it from Hobart, and that was a Hobart print shop. So, when Dan Mader bought it, that parking lot was assigned to that building, not legally or intangibly, because I understand that to join properties, Tim and I've been through this before, they all know those need to be adjacent. So, somewhere through the process, Dan sold that building to Habitat. Down through the course of it, that means that this gravel lot became available. I don't know how that happened because I don't know how Habitat can occupy that building of 7,000 square feet without any parking. I don't understand in the code that I'm aware of that that's possible. Around the corner, then, you just had another 9,000-square-foot building that you changed the zoning on recently, and there's a gym in there. If somebody's operating a gym, it would appear to me that there needs to be some sort of parking. There is no parking for that gym. So, you've got a 7,000-square-foot, 9,000-square-foot building that apparently has no parking assigned to it, and it's occupied. Habitat was running a retail store out of there. I'm not sure how the zoning was worked on that, whether it was M2 light industrial and it was storage or whatever, but they were using that lot extensively. They now have moved their retail store out to the edge of town, but they're doing some remodeling in there to accommodate classes and people coming in for their projects. I don't know. If there's some way that you can let them use this lot and still accommodate parking down there, I would really appreciate it because I really would like to see, you know, new development and stuff in Troy, but I'm really confused as to how we're going to do this. I would suggest you drive down through there and look at the parking because all of the parking spaces on street parking are full almost all the time. So, what I'm hearing here sounds really good, and I'd like to see them as the neighbors, but when Partners in Hope rented from me, they used that parking lot for their people coming in, volunteers and everything else across the street. I assume their traffic's going to be less now, but I didn't experience walk-in traffic at that time. Do you have, do you have any questions on me? Because I've got some history down there in that neighborhood, but I'm just really confused on this, on how we got to the place where this parking lot was available and not tied to those buildings to justify their usage.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments against the application? Okay, this now concludes the public hearing portion of this application review. Questions? Mr. Cole talked about some striping issues at the intersection. Does anybody have any knowledge of that? Or how many parking spots can we take out? Things like that? Can we take a look at that some more?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any striping issues that were there. I was trying to look at where the striping was in the picture. I think the picture was from June, and it didn't show the striping in there. I could address, I think, the zoning question possibly. Without going back and researching, I think that property used to be zoned B3, and the B3 district did not require off-street parking. And then it was rezoned while they were occupied buildings, and so that nonconformity would have continued, which is why they're not, they weren't required to have off-street parking. Not the parking lot itself, but I think the buildings you're alluding to on the block with Habitat.
Okay.
And I'm not, back to the, to the parking, when the stoplight was removed, when? Couple years ago?
Yeah, probably a year, a whole year ago.
So, the legal requirement is, is that you can't park within 30 feet of an intersection, whether it's stoplight or stop sign. When you remove the stoplight, it should not have impacted the parking. I'm not, I'm not recalling authorizing any elimination of any parking out there, particularly as we've looked at our two and four, or two and three hour no, no limit parking map that we just updated.
I couldn't speak to that. I mean, I wish Jill's not here, our city engineer, who that would have gone through.
Wondering if she's here.
If we were to recommend additional parking of lots somehow, how would that impact our action today? We would deny this application or table it for further review?
You could table. You could table it for further review and request they come back with something, should the planning commission choose.
Let me ask you this. If you take a look at the flat map that they put together for the application, the area where it says privacy fence, if you were to take out that one parking lot space that's down the south side, and would they be able to put in a curb cut on Mulberry at the end of that on the east side and maybe put in some parking spots that are perpendicular, excuse me, not perpendicular, but slant?
Parallel.
Nope, yeah, parallel.
Angle parking?
Angle parking is what I'm talking about. So, it looks like there's 15 feet there between the building and the privacy fence. If you allocate, you know, nine of that for a car, if you put in an angle parking, then at that point, you'd still have a pass-through from the alley over to Mulberry Street if we would permit a curb cut. I don't, I don't know if that's possible or...
I don't think nine feet is enough for an angle.
Yeah, I don't think nine feet's enough, which else have?
How many parallel parking spots could we get? It's a 60-foot building, so it looks like, plus that one parking spot that you're taking out, so you might be able to pick up how many parking spots out of 60 feet, 60 plus 42, 100 feet?
Still need a policeman, eight feet for...
Is it possible that they could go to the post office and work out an agreement with the post office to utilize a couple of spaces? Would that please the planning commission?
Within them?
Oh, you're talking about across the tree, not in the fenced area?
Yeah, across the alley.
Which is allowable under our code?
Right.
Yes, which is allowable, the code.
Do we have any questions for the engineer?
Oh, we got lots. Could the engineer come forward, please?
Jill, would you mind coming up to be grilled? We have some questions for you. Mr. Titterton, why don't you just start?
Okay.
Okay, so, Mulberry and Race.
Yes.
We removed the traffic light there...
Traffic signal?
...a signal a year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah.
Did we eliminate any on-street parking when we did that?
Is this to see how good my memory is? I do not believe so. And actually, recently, Habitat Bill Horseman, no. So, he, we've actually been talking in front of their building. We're going to actually reinstate some parking. Not sure why it was removed years ago. We've actually taken down the signs. We just haven't painted the curb, so that is on the north side of Race Street.
Two, three spaces?
Not sure. Adam's going to paint it on Thursday night, so... I locked it, and I didn't really measure it or anything. At the same time, I don't think parking is restricted on the south side? Okay. The parking is not restricted on the south side. I didn't think so, but I wanted to confirm, so...
Let me ask you, if you've got a 100-foot, like, how many parallel parking spots can you get in 100 feet?
Parallel? 20-foot parking spot length, so five.
Five spots.
Yeah.
So, if you were to do this, can you do a curb cut in this area? Because if you did a curb cut, you'd pick up four. You'd need a site plan.
Yeah, it would be a distance issue then at that point.
And so, what was your question? I'm sorry, Al.
We're concerned about parking on the south.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
So, if we were to try to add parking where that privacy fence portion is on the southern portion of the lot?
Yeah.
And make that coming in off the alley, in, out, on Mulberry, so it's one-way, would they be permitted a curb cut at that area?
Well, if you're really, so, you're not going to have enough space to actually get the vehicle through as well as parallel parking, so...
Fifty feet wouldn't cover it?
No. Parallel parking is eight-foot wide, and so...
How much?
Eight foot?
Eight foot wide.
I mean, at a minimum?
Eight foot.
Eight foot? And then a vehicle's typically eight-foot, depending on if it's a, if it's a larger truck that, you know, if they're by chance are doing construction or plumbing or anything like that, it would not be enough. And since the property line is right there, that's not even a setback line.
Well, they haven't done a building yet, so couldn't they move the building forward towards the street? Or are we further encroaching upon the setbacks?
Maybe more of the setbacks, I don't know.
I mean, the setback issue was on the parking spaces. There wasn't any setback issue on the building, yeah?
Can we, can, can Al, can actually? Okay. Oh, I guess they had two comments. One is, we don't need to park on the street because there is enough parking allotted for in the proposed plan for the staff and volunteers that we have working in the building between 9:00 and 4:30 every day. And also, the reason the building was placed on the property where it was is because we were trying to make sure we enhance that corner by providing as much green space as possible for not only just the look of the building, but also to enhance that, that property. So, that was the reason we did not want, it was initially suggested when we were doing drawings that the parking go across the front in a parallel manner, but it would have required that the entire front area be paved, and we did not want to put up a gigantic parking lot. We were more concerned about what it was adding to the neighborhood.
And I agree. I mean, I like green space, so thank you very much. However, parking is a real issue, too.
So, even, I believe, I, we need to go out there and check the, the sightline distances, but I believe even on South Mulberry, that no parking is a significant distance down on the west side of the street. And at the point that we removed the signal, it wasn't that big of a deal. There was a parking lot right here, and we said, we'll just leave it like that. At this point, though, we could go back and we could reevaluate and see if we could move that if we're trying to add parking, not necessarily, do we need parking on the site? You're saying sufficient?
We have sufficient parking for the staffing. We have.
Yeah, for the staffing is within the six. The code says nine. It doesn't really accommodate. I know a lot of, a lot of your customers may walk in.
Yeah, we don't need nine of spots.
But you will have some spot, well, you kind of need to have some accommodation. Now, if we haven't, if we didn't, that's why I asked the questions earlier, Jill, about we didn't eliminate spots when we took out the stoplight, and you're confirming that we're reestablishing, I know at least two, if not three, spots across the street.
Yeah, I feel like at least three, and like I said, then we can evaluate that same time, South Mulberry, if that's, if that's definitely a concern.
Which will only add more spots.
Yep, most certainly. Yeah.
So, I feel better about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for our city engineer? Mr. Wolkey? Any other questions for our city engineer, Mr. Wookiee?
Well, not necessarily the engineer, but anybody that would be more knowledgeable than I am on this. But in the downtown Herbalway District, if there's a change to occupancy, what happens?
And then, down, staff will respond to that?
So, you would be with this plan, this would stay with the property, so the properties would be required.
We're with the property, not the use.
You'd be with the property, yep. Just like if a new use came in, we wouldn't come back until you have to now meet the minimum setback requirement.
So, the underlying zoning would determine what the use would be?
Correct.
What's the underlying zoning permit? Something in which there would be a lot more use of the property?
Well, it remains the way it is currently today. The zoning's not going to change, it just has to go way on top of it. So, the current use is not allowed now, it would still be allowed.
So, the short answer is, is that if there's a change in occupancy, the underlying zoning-
Comes into play.
Goes back, it goes back to the underlying zoning. And if they want to do something unique, they would have to come in with a new DRO application. The DRO approval does not automatically transfer to a new occupancy.
It's just for the items, they may list in the report.
I think that's where you're going with it.
Boy, you've answered my question. Well, now you've got me confused. The DRO transfers to a new occupant? That's not what I was hearing.
No, it wouldn't. It would only, the B2 designation, because a new use is coming in, is a B2.
You can't have somebody come in at a B2 and make them reconfigure the entire lot because of a change of use.
I think the DRO requirement, that the items that Robert has read, the setbacks, the fence, the parking, I think that stays with the property.
Well, they would have to be permanent, I get that.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, the use is a thing of that nature.
It's a hybrid.
My point in the question, though, is-
Be like a barrier.
If it's B2 and the B2 use is more intense than what this planned use is, and we agree to this and they change the use, then we're just cutting our nose off again because we've conceded parking spaces, right?
Then that new use would have to figure out a way to get more parking spaces on the property.
But we wouldn't force them to do that because they'd be in B2, right?
Yeah, if it's on a DRO.
Yeah, it would be on the DRO.
We could come back, we could come back, we could come back with that parking option. I guess, the way I look at the DRO would be, you're approving these items here. If it's anything outside of those items, they have to meet the current code requirement. So, if the use changes, it still has to meet the current code. But yeah, they would still uphold, the building setback would still be the way you've approved it here, even the parking, to your question. We've approved this parking, we stay on that property for that, for that next use.
If the use changes, we've approved six parking spots, okay? That doesn't change anything. If a new use comes upon the property that otherwise would require nine, six is still going to be the law, okay? And I don't think we can require them to make three more parking spots someplace just because they changed the use. Am I off-base?
No, you're correct.
Okay, so my point is, if they do change the use and it's more of an intense use, more people, then we can't go back and require them to put three more lots on there, parking spots on there. I think parking's still an issue.
Correct, that's the way I would read this, too.
Any other questions? I'm going to make a recommendation that we table this so that the parking issue can be reviewed, that the applicant, you can discuss with the applicant about putting more parking on the lot and we come back and reconsider this next meeting. I need to make a motion table.
Well, I'll make that motion with one additional condition. And that is that we seek clarification from Mr. Kerber because I'm not sure I completely agree with the interpretation on what stays with the overlay and what doesn't. I mean, this is an overlay district. This is, in many ways, the same as, you know, when we do our historic reviews. Because we allow somebody to do something based on the historic criteria, does not automatically carry forward to a new use. Now, a lot of that is sign code related and they're trying to change a sign, so it's easier, it's less permanent. But, you know, I'd like to get some clarification at the same time. And time is of the essence, so we do have another meeting in two weeks, correct? Is it two weeks? We don't have a fifth Wednesday this month.
Correct, it'll be in two weeks.
All right.
Okay, there's a motion table. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion, second, no further discussion, please call the roll.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Teterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wookiee?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved, the item is tabled.
Please have the discussion with the applicant concerning maybe changing, particularly with parking, as well as contact with the authority concerning the interpretation of the orders. Okay, the next matter to come before the commission is a historic history application of a new window signage. Does staff have any thoughts?
I did, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the roll. Applicants, Dan and Jessica Beison, owners of a baby company 4D, are requesting the planning commission for an application for new window signs at 223 East Main Street. This property is zone B3, central business district, OHI form. Shows the building to be a two-story brick commercial structure with stone pillars and windows. Includes two storefronts with recessed entry doors. Property was renovated back in 2014 under the current ownership. Building is not on the historic register. Applicant is requesting add window signs to the two front windows and entry door of the business. The building is permitted to have a total of 125 square feet. This individual tenant is allowed 45 square feet wall signage. And this request is for a total of 38 square feet of signage for all three, the two windows and the entry door. Application is in review. Staff recommends approval for the proposed design based on some of the Troy City sign code requirements and some complements the existing colors of the building.
Any questions of staff?
Do we have better colors to look at besides what's on the, are these computer-generated?
These are computer-generated and going to be what is digitally printed from the contractor. Just a light, dark gray, blue and pink.
We're being asked to, if you take a look at the picture, we're being asked to approve both the window signs and the door sign today, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And the total is below the maximum allowed?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of staff? Mission will take action?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Teterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Wookiee?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
It is approved.
Does staff have anything else to come before the commission? Commission members want to discuss anything? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Question to adjourn.
For a second?
Second.
All was paper, signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand for adjourn.